Especially you.
Yeah.
Okay, so we had originally scheduled to have an executive session prior to the meeting. Because of some other things that were going on, we've moved that to after the meeting. We do not expect to come back into regular session to make any decisions. So if you'll call roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Mingleberg?
Here.
Commissioner Polley is absent this evening, and Mayor Holliday?
Here.
If you'll stand and join me in the flag's line.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no ceremonies or proclamations. Do we have any? Okay. So we have two to just talk on something that's not on the agenda, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so Mr. Gifford and Mr. Dias.
Did you come, did you write yours up?
That's so cute.
Clock's ticking.
It's alright, there's two of us. We've got six minutes.
Mr. Gifford.
This is a joint presentation.
Started fifteen minutes ago.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and City Commissioners, my name is William Gifford and I live in Oregon City.
My name is Roger Folletis, Oregon City resident.
And we are both on the board of the Oregon City Parks Foundation, which is a newly-formed organization with the intent of helping the city in developing its parks systems in areas that the city can't do directly itself, often from budgetary constraints, but also because of the fact that the city cannot apply for certain grants that we will be able to apply for. And so we are trying to do what we can in developing philanthropic interest in the city parks, and also by helping facilitate volunteer activity. People, a lot of people want to help things, but don't know what to do, so we hope to be of assistance in that area as well. So we have some big news.
And that is that recently we received our 501(c) status, 501(c)(3) nonprofit status.
Yay!
And so, and we have started moving forward with our fundraising activities, and we also have two grants in the process for the parks. And just to give you a little heads up, we're going to be having an event at the Midway Pub on the 28th, 6 to 8 p.m., for, to partner up with all the groups in the city.
Mostly business organizations.
The 28th of June?
June.
Yes.
And we would like to invite you.
I will be unable to attend, I'll be whisking my way to Indianapolis.
Well, we could have whiskey there for you as well.
Whiskey, I'm still gonna be on a plane.
Oh, whiskey. I'm sorry, just...
Whisking.
Got it, wrong direction.
You know William's gonna go with that.
So mostly that particular event is going to be for business organizations, community organizations, and so on, to help them understand how we can partner with them to make our parks better for the city. We're going to be hoping to have a general community event a little bit later, and it's probably going to be at the end of the Oregon Trail Interpretative Center where one of our major projects is going to be. And that will be a family-friendly, community-wide activity, and that has not been fully fleshed out, so that's a TBA as well. But one of the big advantages of the 501(c)(3), of course, is that donations will be tax-deductible. Of course, that's just a personal comment, you should always get tax advice from a blah-blah-blah. Help me with some more stuff. Tax attorney, yeah. Anything else you want to say?
That's all.
Okay. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay. So, everybody okay with the agenda?
Yes.
Check your ears, okay. Then we'll go on to general business. 16-323, Resolution 1612, declaring an emergency and exempting Clackamas Fire District 1, Station 16, from planning code requirements on a temporary basis. Mr. Conkle?
Thank you, Mayor, evening Commissioners. We are requesting approval of Resolution 16-12 for Station 16 located at 19340 Malala Avenue. The station has a mold infestation that has contaminated portions of the site and made it uninhabitable, uninhabitable, not capable of being used in the manner for which it was constructed. To, in the interim, the location of it is necessary to provide adequate fire and medical coverage for a significant part of our community, and so the proposal is to allow modulators to be placed on the property until a remedy is in place. So what this emergency resolution would do is exempt them from complying with the municipal code as it relates to planning, for design, location, system development charges for a duration of two years. So we are requesting that this be declared as an emergency to exempt them for that time period. We have obviously representatives here. Chief Charlton is here, if you'd like to hear from them, as well as to the situation at Station 16, it may be helpful, and can then answer any questions you have.
Chief?
Sure, thank you very much. Fred Charlton, Clackamas Fire District Number One Fire Chief, and also have Division Chief Doug Whiteley, who is our Fire Marshal and Battalion Chief, Mike Corliss, who is our project manager. So in late 2015, we discovered that we did have an issue at the Hilltop Fire Station that Mr. Conkle referred to, and we have taken steps over the last few months to try and determine what this mold infestation is all about, what the cause is, and then more importantly, what the remedies are. And we got to a point where we knew that we had to temporarily vacate the fire station. We did that about thirty days ago, we went under a temporary closure. And thank you to the city, and specifically to Police Chief Jim Band for allowing one of our medic units to stay up in the Hilltop area. We have temporary quarters now, forty hours a week at the police department, and I think that's working out very well. They're very jealous of us, I think.
Wasn't the first two things you moved, a pair of couches?
You throw it out there and you move on. So we have, and certainly as Mr. Conkle alluded to, it is a very busy first response area for fire and EMS services within the city of Oregon City, so we have kept that medic up in the Hilltop area and relocated a fire engine company just here next door. So we are taking steps, we're working through our insurance carrier to do further analysis, and actually that will begin tomorrow to try and determine what the issues are. But again, this is a building that was built in about 1972, so it's about forty-four years of service, and it has had a mold issue for a number of decades, from what we understand. So we're working through this issue, but we want to make sure that we can get our firefighters back into the Hilltop area to provide that emergency response. So we're asking for two years of modular structure that we'll place behind the fire station, as we determine if we need to make repairs or ultimately design and replace that community fire station.
So, seems to me that that station went through a pretty serious remodel ten, twelve years ago.
It did, maybe, Mike, do you recall?
The remodel was in 2013, or 2003, excuse me.
I was gonna say, yeah.
We had a modular sitting in the front of the fire station at that time. And Towland Valley actually started that remodel, they ran into a mold problem, they put the modular out there, then we inherited the structure, they said they entombed the mold, we did a remodel, we moved in there. 2005, there was a fire in that building, if you'll remember, in the apparatus bay, so we went in and did some further, further stuff, and now we have the mold issue back again.
Okay.
Wow.
Well, I for one, you know, can't tell you enough how much we appreciate what you guys do, and, you know, I've had to get my place a couple times in this last couple of years, so you always show up, yours professional, and we definitely need the coverage up there on the hill, so I don't really have any issue with this. Anybody else got any questions?
Well, we just have to be careful, because the last time we put modulators on a, or one of the times we did, I think they're still there, but the police stations. So we've got to make sure we watch that two-year window.
But we didn't exempt ourselves from any of that stuff.
No, no, I was gonna say, we put modulators in, it's went for an extended period of time, so.
And I think, and thank you, we appreciate that, but I think to Commissioner Shaw's concerns, we want to expedite this process. Living in a modular is not the best option for our firefighter paramedics as well, so we want to make sure we can move through with the next steps. But we do realize, especially if we need to design and construct a new community fire station, that's gonna take a bit of time and quite a bit of work. So right now, our number-one priority is to get through this meeting tonight, but then more importantly, move our firefighters back up into the Hilltop area.
So will you be able to utilize the engine base while you're doing whatever you're doing?
We believe so, so we have isolated the station, nobody's allowed to enter the station, and we will use the apparatus bay for storing equipment, storing apparatus, deconning equipment, but we will not use any of the living quarters. And also, that is the primary location in the city of Oregon City where we fuel our fire apparatus, so four community fire stations fuel there, so it's key to our operations in Oregon City.
Okay.
I move to approve Resolution Number 16-12, declaring an emergency and exempting Clackamas Fire District Number One, Station 16, from planning code requirements on a temporary basis.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any further discussion? You don't know how to use a comment card by now, Mr. Gifford? It's not on my list.
For this one?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I apologize, he did.
Mr. Gifford?
Sorry.
Thank you, gentlemen. Bye, apology, sir.
It's not your fault. I should've filled out two cards.
We'll discuss this later.
I should've filled out two cards, yeah. Oh, you'll get me later, I'm sure. Excuse me, Mr. Mayor and City Commissioners, my name is William Gifford, I live in Oregon City. This particular issue is pretty close to my heart as well, for a couple of reasons. One is, it's my fire station now, because that's the one that's closest to my house, and that's a big deal to us. The fact of the matter is that I think it's pretty still close to seventy-five percent of the emergency responses that the fire district responds to are health-related more than fires. Is that kind of close?
It's about sixty-seven percent.
Sixty-seven, so it's still a huge chunk, and that protection of life, to me, is even more valuable than the protection of property, although I know they're going hand-in-hand. The other thing that I wanted to get clear was, I thought that there were some issues about the seismic reliability of that existing structure as it is, and that there was consideration of tearing it down and rebuilding it anyway. And maybe that's something that's gonna have to be looked at while this whole modular system is in place, but I really want to encourage this getting done as soon as possible, so we can get these guys back to doing their jobs as efficiently as possible, because we need them up there.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Mingleberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
Okay, so, anybody want to pull anything from the consent agenda?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I'm okay.
Okay, then I entertain a motion.
Moved approved, consented, Jim.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Shaw, second by Commissioner Mingleberg. Call roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Mingleberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
Okay, so, moving right on to communications, Mr. Conkle?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of quick updates, Community Health and Safety Fair, June 4th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Harmony Community College Campus. We'll be having our Cascadia Rising exercise on June 8th, so we'll have an all-day event, there'll be two shifts, so multiple, all the directors and the executive team will be participating in that event, in one of those shifts during that day. It's a statewide emergency management exercise, so we will hopefully learn a lot while we're going through that.
So do you want to electives to participate or not?
There's, no, we won't have any of the electives participating in that part of it. The Chamber's First Business Walk is June 7th and June 9th. If you'd like to participate, you can contact either Amber Holdeck at the Chamber, or myself, or Katie Durfee, and we can help identify some times when that's going on, so essentially we'd be walking around talking with several of the businesses as part of the Chamber's First Business Walk. So there'll be two dates that that's occurring. I'll go ahead and turn it over to John Lewis, he has a couple of updates on 12th and Washington and County Road Tax.
So just a real brief on the 12th and Washington, just before I left on vacation, we placed some barricades at 12th and Washington to prohibit left turns there, and that was a result of just a significant number, we thought it was a significant number of accidents that had happened at that location in a short period of time, and just turned out at the time that the city manager and police chief and I were talking about what maybe we should do there, we got another call for yet another accident there, so we were wanting to take a, kind of, some immediate action to kind of calm that a little bit, maybe even send a message, but definitely prohibit left turns until we could figure out, are we doing something wrong up there? Or have we done something, or have we missed something? So we also have been looking at that intersection pretty much every two years. So 2014 was the last time we studied that intersection for improvements that were needed, whether or not it made warrants for signalization, and that was done by the name of DKS, who does a lot of our transportation engineering studies. And so we decided, we might want to bring them back in and have them reevaluate that, short-term, looking for sight-distance problems, for stopping distance concerns. At the time that we chose to close it, we also, one of the accidents had taken out the flashing light, the red flashing light for 12th, and the yellow amber flashing light for Washington. And by the way, I apologize, I think at the meeting that question came up as to whether or not there was a signal there. I kind of went blank on that. I do lose a little track of where we have flash, where we don't, but anyway, it had fallen, it had come down in one of the accidents. So that was another good reason for prohibiting the left turns, because we think some of the problem is just folks, I think it's really related to enough traffic, not enough gaps during certain hours, and whether it be inexperienced drivers or experienced drivers, trying to, you know, get either across or onto Washington from 12th. And that, with the geometric configuration of that, it's just one of those intersections that's got some danger to it. And so we've asked DKS, they've already done an assessment of kind of, you know, some of the immediate kind of things, most of those we've implemented, and then we got the signal light back up, and then we removed the barricade. The plan is to get traffic counts, we're thinking at the first to next week, they'll be doing more traffic counts. They did traffic counts before the median, or the barriers were removed, and they're gonna do them again once traffic kind of gets back into the usual flow. And they're also looking at crash data, safety data, so they can do yet another assessment of whether or not the time has come for signalization. I think that's just a matter of time, and we may have reached that. So if that's the outcome, then we're probably going to come back to the city commission with, may require, we can probably do the design work under our current budget, but if we had to build something there, we'd have to, and it would likely happen in this current biennial budget, so we need to ask you for additional funding to do that. But that's kind of where I think it may go, when I look at my crystal ball, but I just wanted to give you that update, and also explain to the community that, you know, we saw a safety problem there, that we didn't want to just leave unattended to. So that's, that's that. The other piece?
So I have one question and one comment. The question is, do we know what accident brought the light down, and how long the light was missing?
We do know which accident, and I didn't get that date, but it was, it was like, there were six accidents there, I think it was accident four or five.
Okay.
And we can, we can give you specific...
I guess my, I guess my question is, when we have a traffic device like that, why wasn't it a priority to get that back up in the next day or two, instead of it taking several weeks or a month?
So it's my understanding, and again, we utilized the county for our signalization, they do a great job, that's something that I want to emphasize, they do a great job with our signal changes and upgrades when we need them, or replacements when we need them like this. In this case, that was a four-light kind of doghouse, so all of the lights were configured into one unit.
Right.
My understanding was that was damaged, we don't, they didn't have that particular unit in their inventory, and couldn't put that one back up. They ordered the individuals, so now if you look at it, the signals line up with the lanes, and once they knew that we had, we're gonna prohibit the left turns, which happened not necessarily a couple days within the accident, but it happened a couple days within our decision to close that. So they kind of stepped back with, and chose to do it when it could be scheduled, and when they had the right equipment.
All right. My only other comment is, is that, and I concur to you, but I'm just saying this in general, when we do something like, put up these barriers and all this stuff, people notice, and then they notice when it goes away. And so you need to update the commission before you do, or when you do something like that, so when someone calls us and says, hey, what happened at 12th and Washington, I don't have to go, I don't know. So, you know, just an aside, if you could keep us informed when you make decisions that affect the community, so that, you know, we can explain to people, because they're gonna call us most of the time, they're not gonna call you.
We get called, too.
Okay. Go ahead.
The other thing was to talk about the county's measure that was an advisory measure on the road vehicle registration fee or additional gas tax. There wasn't a lot of clarity in that measure as to what they were really going to do, but it does kind of open the door for, given the vote, and the affirmative vote that people seem supportive of that, the county has scheduled an open house on the 9th, and actually, they're calling it a summit. It was a little unclear to me who was invited, but I understand all the city commissioners from all the Clackamas County cities were invited to that. We're a little bit unsure as from staff, what kind of information you'd like in terms of feedback and preparation for that. We have our opinions about maybe how that could help, depending on what they implement, the city, how it could help the city, depending on what they implement. And so I can't, you know, there's a work session before, I don't know if you're interested in that topic and bringing a little bit more information, or if you just want information via email, you let me know, but I think that making sure you're informed, I'm not sure how many of you are going to that, but again, I'm having a little trouble getting out of the county exactly what the, kind of, how the flow of the meeting's gonna go, if they're gonna be telling us something, or if they're gonna be truly looking for information. So we just want to make sure you're prepared, and make sure you feel informed about what maybe we think might work for, at least if that kind of revenue were to come in, how maybe we could help sell that idea.
If I had to guess, based on past behavior, the county will be telling us something, not asking us something, but we'll see.
Again, if, again, email, or do you want it, do you want it scheduled on the work session, or?
Yeah, I think we'll put, I'm certainly planning on attending. Let's see what they have to say. I mean, this is a long way down the road to getting something done in November, and to be honest, an advisory vote doesn't mean very much until you start putting some actual dollars behind it, and that's what's gonna drive people to make decisions on that.
Well, one of the things we'd like to discuss is that there's, whether it's a vehicle registration fee versus a gas tax, and those have different implications to the local government.
Then why don't you put it on the work session, you know, a short fifteen-minute brief on what the differences are? Okay.
For you?
Okay, Chief Band was gonna give us a brief update on the officer shooting.
He does. Good evening Commissioners, and Mayor. So the shooting, which you've all been briefed on, we are just gonna talk about a couple things. The investigation is continuing, basically all of the interviews are done, generally that I'm aware of. In a investigation like this, it's not something that we do internally, there's actually a law that was passed under Bill 111 that kind of governs how officer-involved shootings should be handled. We do have one of our detectives who is one of the co-leads, but the vast majority of the work is done by people from other agencies, the Clackamas County Major Crimes Team. The crime lab, we're still waiting on some results from the crime lab, they've been great, kind of prioritizing some things, and then the DA's office as well, prioritizing grand jury, just because they know that there's a lot, a lot at stake, the community's waiting to kind of hear more details about what happened, which they're entitled to, and then we've got officers sitting on leave, who actually are probably gonna go back to work before grand jury. The difficult part about, we want to be as transparent as we can, but we can't do it at the cost of the investigation ultimately will be a grand jury, we want that to be as pure as possible. We are gonna release, probably in the next day or so, a few more details that the public has not had yet, just kind of a little bit more about what happened. The, I'll just say one thing about, mental health has become our number-one issue. If you think back to some incidents that you probably know about, this event, Libkey, I think you are all aware that one of our officers was hurt on an officer-involved shooting that was up on 99 here recently, that was somebody who had a struggle with mental illness. And then we had another officer who up on Malala Avenue here a couple of years ago had somebody trying to take their gun, and luckily he had a, he was a K-9 officer and was able to deploy, his dog saved him on that one. But increasingly, this has become a problem for us, and the reason it's a problem is because the only help that there really is out there for people who are struggling is if you are a threat to yourself or other people right now, right now, then there's help for you. And what that help basically is, is generally not a mental health worker. The police are called, and we put handcuffs on people and put them in the back of a car, and take them to hospital where they generally get anywhere from a few hours to a few days of treatment before they're let out. So you're essentially criminalizing mental health, and there's a lot of, a lot of things that need to be done to fix this problem, because it is not, we don't, we don't need people with mental illness to see us and go, you know what, the last time I had a crisis, I was handcuffed, thrown in the back of a car like a criminal, and take it to a hospital. It's just, it's a lot of, it's, it's not the way, it's not a good system. Some of the things that we have been working on, there's some other chiefs, Milwaukee's interested in Lake Oswego, basically, we're all gonna contribute some money to having our own mental health crisis worker that would be on-call for us, and this has been in the works for months, to address these issues that have been happening. There were two mental health workers that came to that scene up on 99, so we are trying to get those people to deploy with us, to be available on the phone for consultation, that kind of stuff. And interestingly, I met with the family of Mr. Moore, who is the person who was shot and killed yesterday at Malala PD, and the mother of Mr. Moore brought this same thing up about the need for mental health workers to be deployed with us. Now, obviously, you think about how much money that would cost to have every police officer, having somebody riding with him who is a mental health worker, but we are trying, excuse me, to do, to do something in that arena. Sorry. The officers are doing well, anxious to come back to work, processing a ton of emotion, this to them is never how they want something to work out. You know, in fact, one of the officers said to me specifically, he said, you know, I take a lot of pride in trying to deescalate situations, and talk to people, and calm them down, and he takes pride in the fact that he's pretty good at it. And he said, I never had a chance, he said, the door opened, and the fight was on. And one other little detail that I think is important for people to know, because I don't, I don't think people generally know how much police officers think in the way that they think about their job, and the media certainly does not do us any favors in explaining that. We have arrested, had arrested this same individual without incident on several occasions. The day before this incident, they had gone to his house to serve this same warrant, had an interaction with him through the door, could tell that he was in... was in kind of a mental health crisis at that point. Said, you know, and he does have an arrest warrant, but today is not the day. We're not going to take the risk, some unnecessary risk. The cost-benefit analysis just did not say, let's, we'll just try this another day. And I think that just demonstrates discretion on their part in the way that they think. They're not, they're not looking to charge into confrontations like this. And they certainly, they did great work here, tremendous restraint. And I believe that the public will see once they know everything that our officers really had no choice, and it's just a tragedy at all levels. So that's all I've got. Thank you.
So let me ask you this. If we had this crisis worker in place, could they have scheduled that so that they could take, you know, if we had a situation like this in the future, they know we have somebody that's having a crisis, and instead of arresting him then, you get a hold of this crisis person, you take them back to the scene? Is that something that?
Yes.
Is possible?
That is absolutely possible. And another thing that is really kind of helpful is in, in other situations, there's one thing that we do now that a lot of people aren't aware of, and some of this has been in response to the homeless, some of the problems with the homeless population. People with mental illness, sometimes arresting them and putting them in jail is kind of a square peg in a round hole. It may fix the problem for right now, but ultimately, somebody who has a diminished capacity, are they really going to be affected? Are they really going to show up at court? And at the end, is that what the community needs? What we have done in this program is said, look, you stole something, or you did this, or you were camping or whatever. We could charge you with a crime, we could sentence you, but what we're going to do is say this, you need to work with our community court. You are hereby sentenced to taking your medication and showing up to a Clackamas County Mental Health three times a week. So it's more about giving them services that they need so they don't reoffend as opposed to throwing them in jail. And there has been a lot of success with that. But I also think that this, a crisis worker, what they are really beneficial for is problem-solving issues. That initial incident that led to that warrant where he had reportedly had taken a swing at his neighbor and hit him, that is a, is a time where that crisis worker, we could say, hey, we just had this happen, and bring that person in at that point to maybe work with the family and kind of work on services so that maybe we never get to this point.
Sure. Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. And for all the work that those guys do, and I know it's hard for them to be sitting at home without anything to do, thinking about this night and day. And I certainly know that we're already shorthanded, so it, you know, we need to have all our guys back as soon as we can.
Yeah, that support, I passed on everything that you guys have said. I've had people in the community just send, people in the business community, just send notes saying, hey, we're not really sure what happened, but we really support you guys. We support them, and we know this is tough for them. And I afford every single one of those. And to the guy sitting at home, I literally snap him and whatever you do with your phone, and send him the pictures. And it is very meaningful to them that their community supports them. It's, it's not lip service. It really means a ton to them.
Well, and it might not be the same in another community.
That is damp, that is very true.
Darn, bro.
Those darn beavers, anyway.
Okay. Just, just real quick, and I want to thank Jim and his officers. It's amazing how much is asked and how much things have changed in terms of what officers respond to, what public employees respond to. It's not limited to just what we see in the street or we hear about in the paper, you know, their impacts to the library, to the pool, to the community center, to our parks. So it's changing. And so I just want to acknowledge and appreciate Jim's leadership as well as the other directors in, you know, talking about this, trying to figure out how do we address this in new and innovative ways and be responsive to a changing environment that is coming at us like a freight train. Library Director Cole, she's going to give us an update on, what are you working on?
Trasch enclosure behind the library.
They've probably had my breath for like three weeks.
We've missed you. So a few changes at the library, at the new building, when the picture comes up. Here it comes, slowly but surely. We've been seeing a lot of concrete being poured again. They've been working on the curbs, and now they're working on sidewalks and planter areas. Can you see this?
Can you guys see it?
Yeah.
No, we can see it, but Renata's got a problem with her monitor.
Oh, it's okay. I can look at his. Oh, okay. So just running through a couple of these. And now we have, the playground surface is board, not the final surface, obviously. That rubberized material will go on top of that.
Thank you, Mom.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But it's, it's, yeah, that's right. We're giving out hard hats, you know.
Tough as playground in Oregon.
Part of, all part of the project. So that's what that is, looking like a pretty big size. The nice thing about it, too, is it's got this low wall around it, which just adds to the seating capacity for all the parents who will be sitting there watching their little ones play.
And those walls will have the little skateboard thingies on the top of them?
Yeah, they'll have something. They'll have to. The one in the back is a planter, just, and then, like I said, the curbs are going in all the way around the block. It's really rough there, and I hear from John Lewis, my rough street days are not over, but we're keeping our eye on the prize because when it's done, we'll have beautiful sidewalks, beautiful streets, and it's going to look amazing. This is the ramp behind the playground going down into the back door, which is going to be a staff-only door. You can see that door open right there. It goes into a mechanical space, that particular one does. And then on the right is the beautiful new trash enclosure, which is really nice looking. This is looking up at that wall at that corner, and I just wanted to give you kind of the effect of what that looks like. That's called coining, where it ridges out occasionally. That is a technical term. And it's spelled with a Q. It's a very interesting word. But that's right, looking up at teen, and I just thought that looked really great. It adds a lot. It's on each of the corners, obviously.
It's actually a bridge term, comes from the old stone masons.
Do tell.
Ooh.
You know, it sounds like a good story, no matter what. Give you a little bit of credit there.
Give a talk at the library.
So this is the entry canopy, and most of the pieces are up on that entry canopy from inside. The existing Carnegie looking out, they've covered up those windows, obviously, with plywood, just so they don't break them. Pink, the pink, the magenta is actually, everybody who's seen it really loves it. There would, I don't know what you call it, but it's like, that goes around the beams. It's a little bit dark, but it looks really great. So that's going up. The cabinetry is going in, and the carpeting will be going in at the end of this week. So it's really, really taking shape and side. And then I have a little bit more information, but I just always have to share these cute moments with you. Our children's librarian, who seriously has the best job in the world, got this invitation from Merrill Hurst School. And when we see things like the OC library written by five-year-olds, we just kind of love it up there. So that's the end of the presentation. I did want to give you an update on the move, which we've been working on for a very long time. And you may recall that we were scheduled to start moving into the new building starting January, oh, January, July 7. So what we're going to do is we're going to close on the 4th of July, do some prep work on the 5th and 6th, and then start moving in on July 7 so that we can be completely out of the Carnegie by the 13th, so the contractors can move in on the 13th and stay on their schedule, so that the Carnegie part will be done at the end of September. We will not be reopening immediately. It'll probably take us about the 21st, we think, to reopen, because a lot of shelving, furniture, all that stuff has to be done. Those dates are subject to a little bit of change as things develop, and I'll keep you posted. What we're working on mostly right now is, of course, that the transition into the new building go as well as possible, and also that our patrons know what to expect during that time. So I don't know if you get our email newsletter, but I sent it out this, on Monday for June. It goes out monthly. And it just kind of gave people a snapshot of what to expect will happen with their holds and their returns. And other libraries, you know, we have to prep other libraries to get heavier traffic. So we're having all those conversations right now. And it seems to be going pretty smooth so far. Every time we mention, you know, we'll be closed, everybody's like, we don't care. We can't wait until you open in the new building. They're so excited. We're hearing nothing but positive about how it's looking so far. Everybody loves it. So, any questions?
So when you say it will reopen on the 21st, 21st, is that of July, right?
Yeah, so about two and a half weeks, more or less, you know, subject to a few days.
And so since the work in the Carnegie library is going to be continuing on, are there functions that will not be active until the whole development is finished?
We'll be doing all of our regular functions in the new addition, once we reopen in there, starting the 21st or whatever that date turns out to be. But in the meantime, we, like, between the 7th and the 21st, we are telling people, we don't want you to return books to us. In fact, they are not due until after we reopen. No fines. We're not kidding, you know.
Check out a lot, William.
And your holds will be, they do this thing called suspended, so that you move up in the holds queue, but you're, they're not waiting for you, so they don't, you know, run out. So that will happen. And there's ways to deal with that. If you're an individual that you don't want that to happen to your books, you can change that, and we can help you change that, or the other libraries can help you change that. So we're trying to get all that information out to the other libraries and to patrons, so everybody's prepared. So we'll be putting up some FAQs on the website. You know, we've already thrown that information out there in the email newsletter. If you have any other ideas, Facebook spreads it out pretty well. So.
We actually got a nice shot of the library from the lookout. What is that, that lookout yesterday down? Is that that promontory lookout? Is that what that's called or something?
Promontory Park, I believe.
Promontory Park lookout. Took a picture from up there at the top of your library.
Oh, wow.
I need to send that to you. So, yeah, looks pretty cool.
It'll be interesting, because it'll be a new view. I mean, to see that building in from certain places, yeah.
Need to give me your cell phone number later on.
Okay. Thanks.
Last, Katie's just going to pop up. We launched the new redesign for the Oregon City website, www.orcity.org. So with the new website, really tried to revisit in terms of the style of it, the format of it. A lot of the actions will be the same throughout departments, grouped departments, frequently asked questions. So we were able to track which websites were getting the most traffic historically, and then started to weed out some of those websites and information that really wasn't being utilized, reorganized, and provided that information in the website. And what we hope will be a more user-friendly, and it is now mobile-friendly as well. So whether you're at the office at home or on the go, you will have access to the information in a usable format, regardless of which device you're using. One of the other things we heard quite a bit was, as it related to land use and how to track some of those, so there is new interactive mapping systems embedded in the website that'll identify construction projects, land use applications, and you'll be able to dive into as much information as you'd like to receive on those. So hopefully you have the chance. And obviously, this is a, it'll be tweaks continuing as we kind of work through it. There's a lot of information on our website. It's utilized quite a bit, not only by the community and our businesses, but also staff. So, and it just came up for you here. So this is the new, the new layout and information on there. So hopefully, if you have a chance to use it, and we'll get some feedback and make tweaks as necessary.
Nice.
Okay.
That's all that I have tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Mengeberg, do you have anything to report?
I just enjoyed going to the teddy bear parade and the event at Clackamas Park.
Okay. Commissioner Shaw?
Let's see, OCBA Marijuana Forum, very interesting. And put on by Pete Walters and one of, one of our officers was there, too. So then went to the county-city dinner. Very sad night. It was in Cabela's in Tuolletan, so I had to sit through that and looked around at this building that should have been in Oregon City. But the mayor there, he's quite a character, and he put on a pretty good program in.
Where?
In Tuolletan.
Oh, yeah, loose, entertaining guy.
Yeah, yeah. And they talked about their River Walk that they have going on there, too. So it's pretty nice. And they call that the Tuolletan River Greenway Trail. Then went to the Mountain View, joined the mayor up there at Mountain View, I think Rocky or, I don't know if you're up there. Mayor and I are up at the Mountain View Cemetery for Memorial Day. It was interesting, I think it was not last night, it was a Wednesday night, or Tuesday night, but last night. Going down Main Street of Oregon City, and I hear this music going on, and here was the Oregon City Jazz Band down on Liberty Plaza. Place was a bunch of people there, listening to the jazz band. It was pretty cool on a weekday night, listened to live music down there from the high school. So that's pretty cool. And then I'll have, probably the mayor probably wants to talk about our event we just went to here at 6 o'clock, too, which was pretty cool. So kidding.
Thank you for, I almost forgot, the teddy bear parade and festival. It's over. I know that. I should say thank you to Public Works, Police Department, Parks Department, for all the work with the parade that the Lions Club almost is entirely doing themselves. And the Teddy, or the Piner Festival with Optimus Club does. Yeah, it was mixed bag of weather, but a good event, and it is done. School's almost done, and Sunday is graduation for our students. And seniors' last day is, well, last day, full day is tomorrow. They have events going on on Friday. Let's see, couple of meetings today about the Irma Tinger House. And then we went to the event down at the Interpretive Center, and I'll let the mayor talk about that, too. I just wanted to mention that the event at the Interpretive Center was for the construction program, the high school. Britt Tucker, who I've had the privilege of working with at the high school for quite a few years, I think he's been there since 2003. Amazing program that the construction program, the construction program of the high school has been such a major component of the Parks Department and the partnership that they've had there, and the amount of parks that they've affected in, in the city in terms of building projects, et cetera. And so we got to go kind of honor the students graduating this year, but also thank Britt Tucker, which unfortunately, he is retiring this year. So I think, I don't know if we can talk about this, but I think my personal opinion is that we, as a city, need to convey to the school district how important that program is, and that if at all possible, it continues with a new person. And I hope that the Parks Department does that, and I hope that PrAC does that, and anyone else that knows the importance of that program.
So were you listening, Tony? So can you guys put together a resolution for us to send to the district and to the school board?
Certainly.
And I'll just take it to the school board meeting and read it. And then whoever is in charge of, I guess, I guess Denise is in charge of Parks. So if you chat with your PrAC committee about that, and then who was the other one you were talking about?
Oh, Parks and PrAC.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that, or anyone else in the community.
All right. So that is?
Yeah.
So I've had a busy couple of weeks, spent a couple of days in San Diego on my real job. And then we had both a tri-city advisory committee meeting and a regional wastewater committee meeting. We are planning on a few of us going up, including Commissioner Jim Bernard. Commissioner Jim Bernard, this Saturday to take another look at the Omni processor. Um, I believe that the Omni processor is a way to solve our solids issue and save the ratepayers $40 million. Um, I'm getting some pushback from a couple of people on the other side, because they say, oh, well, we don't know if it'll work, we don't, you know, they throw up a lot of red herrings, but at the end of the day, I'm convinced that the folks up there know what they're doing, they built the first jig that makes the, uh, the Boeing 787 be in, in single pieces to make the fuselage, so instead of it being welded together, these are entire circular pieces that fit together to make that airplane substantially stronger, um, so this is a group of very, very, very smart people, and, um, and they've taken technology that is basically off the shelf and put it in a di, a different formation to make this process work, um, so I'm going to continue to, to fight to, to help us see if we can't save at least Tri-Cities, you know, a few million dollars in, uh, in old technology versus new technology. Um, I did attend the, uh, the Teddy Bear Parade, I was the grand marshal, the grand poobah, Jim, I, I didn't have to wear one of those, uh, things.
You were supposed to, I think.
They didn't have one, so, um, and, uh, I, I did go to the memorial service, uh, at the, uh, at the cemetery, and tonight was honored to be able to, uh, speak to the 2016 graduating class of the Oregon City High School Construction Class. Um, people don't understand really how much effect these folks have had, but in, in at least a dozen parks, they've built something, um, and probably the, the two latest things, they're just finishing up at Barkley Hills Park, and then the completion of the, of the stage at the End of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center, this stuff could not have gotten done without the, the cooperation and the help from these, these construction classes. On the other side of that coin, we hear people talking all the time about STEM. Well, this really is, whether you want to look at it or not, it's a STEM class, these folks are getting actual experience, actual knowledge about how to build things, and no matter how far we go down this technological road of iPads and smartphones and all that stuff, there's always going to be a need for somebody to pound a nail, to tip up a board, to put in a plumbing pipe, to run the electrical, there's, all of those things are everyday skills that, that some of our kids need to have, because for one reason or another, they're not going to move on. I have, one of my youngest sons is like that, that he was never going to go to college, we knew that from the time he was 14, so now he is in, uh, on all his own, has ended up being an apprentice to a master woodworker in Colorado, and is having a time of his life building very high-end, big furniture for rich folks, so, you know, there's, there's always a need for people to have skills with their hands as well as with their head, and this program is one of those programs like JRTC who provides skills that are specialized. Um, and just to throw on a plug for JRTC, uh, you know, what those kids learn is, is leadership and cooperation, and those are two things that we use every day in our, not only our jobs, but up here, uh, we have to find ways to lead and find ways to get along with each other, even if we don't necessarily, you know, philosophically agree on everything. Um, I know I've got some, uh, had some people say, well, you guys never talk about anything up there, and I go, well, that's because, you know, we all have decided that we're going to make the best decisions for our community, and unless it is something that is absolutely paramount in our private, uh, principles, we're going to try to leave that stuff out and get stuff done for the community. So, uh, once again, if you're out there and you think this program is important, call Larry Didway at the, uh, at, at the district office, uh, talk to your local school board member, I can't list them all off, but I know Chris Story is one, along with, who's the chair this year?
Cameron.
Huh?
Is it Cameron?
Yeah, Cameron Seward. Um, you can reach those guys, um, talk to your local high school principal, um, but we need to find someone else to take, uh, this excellent teacher spot and continue this program, and very often, um, programs like this can die if they don't get the right person to come in, um, so it's, it's important that, that we, as a community, let the district know that this is important to us. Um, I'll be going to the US Conference of Mayors, uh, leaving here, I think, on the 24th of June, so I'll be gone for just a little under a week, uh, back representing Oregon City with, along with a, a few of our other, uh, mayors, I know, uh, Mayor Augen from Twalton's going, uh, Mayor Bemis from Gresham is going, um, Mayor Cook from Tiger will be there, and I'm not sure who else, I think Danny Doyle's probably going to go, so there'll be a bunch of us there, uh, to represent, uh, Oregon and, and our cities at the, at the national event. Um, other than that, I think I'm covered. Did I miss anything? Uh, I know we have a Lamp Falls Legacy Partners Group meeting coming up, uh, towards the end of this month, or the beginning of next month, um, you know, things are moving along well with, with the legacy projects, the other things we're doing, um, and still working towards getting, um, something done down at Rossman, and when I have something that I can report, I will, um, but know that we haven't, uh, given up on that area down there, um, as much as we like to say the wheels of government grind exceedingly slow, sometimes these kinds of negotiations do as well, so.
You're talking about the two openings on Saturday, if anybody wants to attend those ribbon cuttings, or whatever we're doing.
Oh, so, yeah, I had originally intended to be here on Saturday, this trip up to Washington, came up sort of on the, on the fly, so there are two ribbon cuttings, um, that I had originally scheduled to be at, that I won't be able to, uh, one is at the, what's the?
Menchies.
Menchies.
Yogurt.
Frozen yogurt, um, at 12:30, and then there is the, uh, the patio, new patio at the Lamp Falls Media Center, which is from 4:00 to 6:30, and I think the ribbon cutting there is at 4:30, I think Commissioner Smith has already committed to doing that one?
Yeah, Brian said he was going to do the yogurt.
Okay, but.
Get him. Hey, I got a coupon, you know what they have?
So, if you, if you would like to attend either or both of those, um, you know, it's nice to let our business community know that we're aware of them and that we appreciate their business, so, uh, other than that, unless there's something I missed, then we're ju-